Good morning, everybody. This, the Wednesday, October 7th, 2020, a regular meeting of the Nagshead Board of Commissioners is called to order. If you will please join me in a few moments of silence. And among those things we might think about are those who are in the path of Hurricane, I believe it's Delta at this point.
It is Delta.
And now if you will stand as you're able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. Commissioner Cahoon?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'd like to remove item E3, the approval of minutes from the agenda. There's a couple items that I'd like to have added back that were not listed in there from our last meeting.
Okay. So, the motion is to approve the agenda with the removal of item E3 from the consent agenda?
That is correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is recognitions, and I'll call Chief Webster.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us a few minutes to introduce a new officer to you, Grady Edwards. Grady, if you want to step up. Grady joined the agency on March 16th, 2020. He's completed all his field training and is now a solo officer. Prior to joining our agency, he was a police officer with the Elizabeth City Police Department for 10 years. While working at Elizabeth City, Grady was able to earn his intermediate law enforcement certificate and became certified as both a SWAT and K-9 officer. So, as you can see, we're still attracting great experienced officers to our agency. Grady is married and resides in Columbia with his wife, Kristy, and two children, Kayleen and Gavin. And just a side note, Grady served the US government as a K-9 handler at the US Embassy in Iraq for several tours.
Awesome.
Grady Edwards.
Wow, cool, great, thank you.
Good morning.
Welcome to the town, Officer Edwards. The next new employee will be introduced by Stacy?
Amy.
Amy, I'm sorry.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. This morning, I am very happy to introduce to you Stacy Reichler. She is our new Human Resources Manager. Stacy comes to us from the town of Abingdon, Virginia. She is a Senior Certified Professional by the Society for Human Resource Management. And I really didn't know what that meant, so I Googled it. And it means that these are individuals who develop strategies, lead the HR function, foster influence in the community, analyze performance metrics, and align the AR strategies to organizational goals, which is very impressive. So, we're very lucky to have her. She spent five years as the sole HR administrator for the town of Abingdon, Virginia. She has over 10 years of HR experience, extensive project management experience, and over 20 years of leadership and recruitment experience. Stacy has an MBA in Human Resources Healthcare Management and is in the process of her doctoral studies in Business Administration and Human Resources. Just a few things, all right, Stacy just started on Monday. So, already a few things that she talked about, which I think are important, is her role of bridging the communication gap within the organization, as well as having an open-door policy for our employees. And on a personal note, she has two children. Her son is a 2019 graduate of the United States Military Academy at West Point, and her daughter graduates in December with a degree in psychology. She's been married for almost 25 years and has three rescue dogs. She loves to kayak, read, and enjoy cooking. And she says, quote, "I am honored to represent the town of Nagshead as a human resource manager and look forward to a long productive relationship." And believe me, the feeling is mutual. So, thank you, Stacy.
Well. Thank you, Amy. So, Chief Webster?
Thank you all once again. I'd like to recognize Officer Ben Jadoff for five years of service. Police Officer First Class Ben Jadoff came to work for Nagshead Police Department on September 4th, 2015. Officer Jadoff grew up in Winston-Salem, North Carolina, and graduated from High Point University and attended BLET at Forsyth Community College. Officer Jadoff is a TASER instructor and is a member of the Dare County JTAG, the Regional SWAT team, where he assists frequently with planning and setting up of training, and he resides in Maniob. And as an interesting tidbit, Ben has a huge collection of baseball cards, and in the words of his sergeant, "has a frightening knowledge of stats and players." Thank you, Ben.
Thank you for that. Yes. Thank you, Officer Jadoff. And we have a small token of appreciation that I will give it to Phil and let him pass it on to you. Be glad when this is over and we can greet you guys the way we used to do. Thank you. The next item on our agenda, I'll call on Shane.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. It is my honor to come before you today to recognize three of our fire captains for 15 years of service to the town of Nagshead.
Wow.
I would like to begin by speaking a little bit about the three of them and how they came to Nagshead. Prior to the opening of Fire Station 21 in South Nagshead, 12 new firefighters were hired during the months of September and October of 2005. Chris Day, Wayne Kidd, and Phil Wolfe began their careers in September of that year with six other firefighters. They have remained with the town and have worked their way to the position of fire captain, where each of them supervises a shift of firefighters. Each of these men brought with them knowledge from other departments and have gained additional knowledge and certifications that has enabled them to provide a high level of professional service to our community. Captain Day began his firefighting career with the Collington Fire Department in 1996. However, that's when he actually got hired as a firefighter there. He began when he was 19-years-old as a volunteer.
Wow.
Later, he was promoted to fire captain in Collington before deciding to come to work for Nagshead. Chris remains a volunteer in Collington, is now a lifetime member, and serves as one of their assistant chiefs. He is also a member of the North Carolina Hazardous Materials Regional Response Team. Captain Kidd began his fire service career in Currituck County with the Moyoc Fire Department in 2001. Wayne's dad was also a firefighter with the city of Chesapeake, where he recently retired from. I'm sure Wayne spent many days there dreaming about being a firefighter when he got older. Captain Wolfe began his firefighting career as a volunteer firefighter with the Springs Volunteer Fire Department in East Hampton, New York in 1991. In 1998, he made a change and moved to Virginia, where he became a police officer with the city of Portsmouth, but realized by 2002 that the fire department was a much better option for him to work at. We're extremely thankful that these men came to work in Nagshead. They have each brought skills and abilities, as well as a willingness to learn and to share their ideas. They're all great leaders who inspire their subordinates while also taking on new challenges. Gentlemen, I'm extremely proud to work with you over the last 15 years, and I hope that we continue to work together for many more.
It's pretty amazing to see 45 years of service with the town of Nagshead standing there, and we really appreciate what you guys do for us. Outstanding. And, I'm sorry, we do have small tokens of appreciation, small relative to that period of time, that I will pass to the chief to pass along to you guys. Thank you. Phil?
Thank you all again. We're now going to recognize Sergeant Stephen Anderson for his 15 years of service to the town. Sergeant Anderson joined the Nagshead Police Department on September 26th, 2005. In his tenure with the Nagshead Police Department, Stephen has worked as a patrol officer, criminal investigator, and patrol sergeant. Sergeant Anderson has earned his Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate, completed the West Point Leadership Program, and is the lead firearm instructor for the agency. And I would expand on that. He's not just the lead firearm instructor for the agency. He is, first, a volunteer for any agency that might be struggling with a need for a firearm instructor. He's always willing to help out, and I'm very proud of him for that. Sergeant Anderson is married and lives in Grandy with his wife Tiffany and daughter Tatum. And in his time, Officer Anderson does exactly what Tiffany tells him to do. And I'm very proud to work with him, and he has an excellent work ethic and is always one to provide suggestions on how to improve processes, and I really appreciate that, Stephen. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. And we have a token of appreciation for you as well that I will pass to the chief to pass along to you, and we appreciate your service here. Yes, sir. Yes, thank you.
I've got to put my glasses on. I'm not as well heard as Phil here. Good morning, Mayor Cahoon and distinguished commissioners. Nagshead Fire Rescue likes to recognize team members who do extraordinary things. Today, I'm here to recognize Ocean Rescue Captain Chad Motts for commitment, compassion, and character. Captain Motts' actions on August 30th, 2020, revealed the strong character Chad has and his commitment and his compassion for human life. On August 30th, Chad was off-duty and joined the beach with his family. As low tide was just beginning to peak, Chad recognized two gentlemen who were caught and struggling in a rip current. He took immediate action to intervene. He entered the water on his personal paddleboard and contacted the first swimmer. After assuring the individual was okay, he proceeded to the swimmer that was further out. He arrived to find the swimmer face down and exhausted. Chad made many attempts to place the surfer, or excuse me, the swimmer on his paddleboard, but the ocean conditions made that impossible. He stayed with the swimmer and assured of his safety until help could arrive. He was assisted by a local surfing instructor and members of our Ocean Rescue team. True to Chad's character, he never made a big deal of this incident. The Ocean Rescue Supervisors contacted me and told me about the incident and Chad's actions. And in their words, Chad had an impact on human life that day and is deserving of recognition. Because of Chad's quick actions and valor, I am pleased to present Chad Motts with Ocean Rescue's Life Saving Award. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad, for the, not just for the work you do, for the example that you set, for the care that you have for our community and for our swimming community. We appreciate you very much. The next item on our agenda is a proclamation, and I'll call on Michael Zainer.
Thank you, good morning. The National Planning, American Planning Association, which is a professional organization for myself and several of the professional planners here, recognizes October as National Community Planning Month. And so, we presented this proclamation for the board's consideration, recognizes the value of planning professionals, but also the value of planning in our community. I think it's apparent to everyone who visits Nagshead how well-designed it is, how well-thought-out it is, and I believe that's directly attributable to the value of planning. It's important, this is not just a recognition of planning professionals, but also citizen planners like the members of the planning board yourselves and the planning process in the community and all of the stakeholders that participate in that. So, we appreciate the consideration and recognition.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I will read for the board's consideration, the proclamation for Community Planning Month. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. And whereas community planning and planners can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work, live, and play. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be equally involved in making choices that determine the shared vision of their neighborhoods. And whereas the full benefits of planning require public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions, sound planning, and plan implementation to make the quality of our neighborhoods and environment. And whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of the planning board and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the town of Nagshead. And whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by the professional community planners of the town of Nagshead and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore be it resolved that the month of October 2020 is hereby designated as Community Planning Month in the town of Nagshead in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month, adopted at the town of Nagshead, North Carolina, the 7th day of October 2020. And a motion to adopt would be in order.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We do have a long tradition of planners in this community, going back to its beginnings, and it is a well-planned and well-maintained community. And we have a couple of generations of staff now to thank for that. The next proclamation, I'll call on Randy Wells.
Good morning again. October is Fire Prevention Month. The National Fire Protection Association has designated cooking fire prevention. And what we've seen is, is that this is an issue that you have throughout the whole United States, but here in Nagshead as well. And we are committed to doing community risk reduction actions that will prevent these fires, such as our open house tomorrow from 4:00 to 7:00, which will be concentrated on kitchen fires. Fire prevention is a never-ending job in the fire service. It's part of our community risk reduction model and something that we strive for every day to make our community safe. Thank you for this proclamation, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, I will read for the board's consideration, the, this proclamation, excuse me. Whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas all town of Nagshead residents should identify places in their home where fires can start and eliminate those hazards. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas all town of Nagshead residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home. And whereas town of Nagshead residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas all town of Nagshead residents should listen for the sound of the smoke alarm, and when it sounds, respond by going outside immediately to the designated meeting place. And whereas the town of Nagshead first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas the 2020 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Serve Up Fire Safety in the Kitchen", effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now therefore be it resolved that October 4th through 10th, 2020, is hereby designated as Fire Prevention Week throughout this town, and all the people in the town are urged to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the town of Nagshead Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2020. All town residents and visitors are invited to attend the annual Nagshead Fire Department Drive-Thru Open House, held at the Douglas A. Remali Fire Station 16 on Thursday, October 8th, 2020, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., adopted at the town of Nagshead, North Carolina, the 7th day of October 2020. That's the proclamation. A motion would be in order?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The only thing I'm disappointed is not in there, chief, is with kitchen fires, is a mention of fire extinguishers, home fire extinguishers. I know that that's something that's emphasized at the, at the open house typically sometime within the last two years. I finally, after almost 30 years, had occasion to use a home fire extinguisher because an old-school regulator on my fish cooker caught fire, and I had flames spouting out of the top of the propane tank and needed to, needed to use my fire extinguisher and put it out. Fortunately, my daughter, who had been drilled on where the fire extinguisher stayed, brought it to me in haste, and I was able to put that out. So, thank you for that. The next item on our agenda is public comment. Mr. Leidy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will open the public comment session, and I'm going to start by asking if there's anybody here who wishes to provide public comment to the board. Since there's no one, I'm going to dispense with the instructions, and we can close the public comment.
Okay, all right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda from which we have removed item E3. And what I would suggest is that we proceed with approval of the consent agenda and follow that immediately with Mayor, with Commissioner Cahoon's comments on which items should be corrected.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioner Cahoon, if you will, address the item that you wish to have corrected.
Thank you, Mayor. In the minutes, under the discussion that we had under my agenda about J-1 visa program, I also addressed the comments that were made during public comment about the cutting of funding for lifeguards, and I corrected that, and I'd like that added back to the minutes. We did not cut any funding for lifeguards. We did not have as many lifeguards because they're visas, they could not get into the country. So, I'd like that so noted back in to correct that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda then is item F, Reports and Recommendations from the Planning Board and the Planning and Development Director. Michael?
I don't necessarily have anything to expand on that was included in my report. Happy to address anything, any questions the board may have or additional information I can provide.
Board questions or comments for the Planning Director?
I have just one.
Yes.
Mike, on the top of page 5, staff submitted a letter of interest under the Hazard Vinigation Grant Program related to Hurricane Dorian for the acquisition of property.
Yes.
What was that for?
So, there's a property in South Nagshead that's located on the oceanfront, on the beach.
Understood.
We actually received some communication yesterday from a consultant that's reviewing those applications and will provide additional information that may inform that application, or they offered that it may be able to be subject to a different funding source, too.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda then is the Islington Street Beach Access and Kelly Wyatt.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Trying to find the best item to pull up while we talk through this. Maybe the site plan. Thanks for bearing with me there. As noted, this is a site plan review for the Islington Beach Access. There, what this is showing is improvements to include an asphalt drive aisle with turf stone parking stalls, stormwater management measures, above-grade decking and showers, and a wooden walkway to connect to the existing wooden walkway. We pen out, you can see this piece of the walkway already exists, so what we would be doing here is just adding this little section of walkway. And as noted, here's the asphalt drive, the turf stone parking areas. We do have one light proposed right here, as well as stormwater management. Trying to just hit the highlights for you. As you can see, there's some existing black pines along the perimeter of the southern boundary. There's an intent to keep those, but additionally, we are also proposing a row of small shrubs and grasses along both the northern and southern boundary, given that there's residential properties to both the north and the south. Might cover most of it. Obviously, beach access is allowed in the R2. You're allowed 33% lot coverage. We're at 32.9. There are no structures associated with it with regard to height and architecture. There is no parking standard for a public beach access, but we have 11 parking spaces of which, too, are handicap. Also, in addition, we do have greater than 20% impervious coverage, which is a requirement of Section 10.92.14 of the code. We touched on landscaping, lighting. There will be signage, and that will be done in compliance with the town and CAMA standards. Stormwater management has been provided. Traffic circulation has been designed by the town engineer. Both Fire and Public Works have reviewed and approved the site plan as it's been presented. A CAMA minor permit is required. We've made application for that. So, happy to address any questions that you may have at their September meeting. The planning board recommended unanimously to recommend approval on this.
Commissioners? I have one.
Yes.
And this is a drum. I haven't, I don't beat a lot, but it does concern me that at a number of our beach accesses, there are not good sightlines for the multi-use path as you're leaving the beach access. And you have to be really careful, and those are relatively high-traffic driveways. And I don't know if that survey is super-precise, but on the north side, it looks like the neighbor's shrubbery out in the right-of-way could be in obstruction. So, if, while we're out there, at least, I realize everything grows back, and everything grows, but I think if we have the opportunity to improve the sightline there, at least on, from day one, it would be a good idea.
Okay, great, and...
But we do have a stop sign.
Yes.
I mean, there's a stop sign right at the spot.
Yes, that's true. So if they observe that, you know, what I, what we all know happens and what we find is that somebody turning right is only looking left as they come out of there and they, they, if they're turning into that lane of traffic, they're only concerned about that lane. They don't look.
And as we do that, perhaps contact the neighbor about their vegetation.
Yes.
As part of that process.
Just to, especially, just let them know we're going to be, we may be attacking that. That would be great. Thank you. Any questions from the board then, before we take action? Hearing none, then a motion would be in order to approve the site plan.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the site plan as presented.
Okay. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is G-1. Mr. Zainer?
So we're returning to you to discuss the town's camping provisions that are included in the town code. And we had originally brought to you an amendment July 1, and I included a copy of that ordinance, amending the town code on July 1, to clarify the prohibition on camping or using an RV to camp on property. And we broadly defined that as a prohibition on using vehicles, but primarily we were focused on RVs and travel trailers. And at that time, and I included this in the memo, there were some discussion points and the board indicated a general interest in maybe coming back and considering whether future changes might be necessary or preferred. So there are really three points that I believe the board raised at that time. There's currently no duration limit on camping, either consecutive nights or a maximum number of nights per, you know, year or 12-month period. And I think the board wondered if there, there should be. Second point, should camping allowances or even if the board decided to allow vehicles to be used under certain circumstances, should those only be, conditions only be allowed for owner-occupied or permanent resident-occupied properties? And I state, in other words, should those leasing a property for a month or week, a short-term rental or less, be precluded from having camping occur on the property, which technically they're currently allowed to do? And then, third, regardless of the allowance, should total occupancy of a property be limited by wastewater permits? Right now, obviously occupants of a home, the occupancy of a home is limited to wastewater permits. How does the, should there be a reference in this section to that total limit when we're taking into account that there may be others occupying or others camping on a property?
Okay.
So generally, it's, does the board prefer staff to prepare additional amendments to this section at this time related to those items or other items?
I'll start with Commissioner Fuller.
Okay, briefly, number one, can somebody place a camper on a lot that does not have a residential? Does have septic, does have water, but doesn't have a residence?
No. They could perhaps park it, but they definitely could not use it.
Okay, 'cause I didn't see that in here. So I just want to make sure that's clear, that it can't be on just a vacant lot.
Yeah.
And if it's clear, then it's clear. I didn't, I didn't pick it up.
The parking of it, I believe, would be allowed. The, the use of it would certainly not be allowed and that's covered under the U.D.
I'm fine with that, okay. As far as time limit goes, I'm for making a time limit. I'm not, I don't know what that is. I wouldn't, I would hope it wouldn't be more than a week at least. And I do think we should look at wastewater as a limiting capacity. I don't know if that fits what you're recommending or not, but those two things and then, the only other question I have, and I hate to even bring this up, but would you consider a big Mercedes camper van a vehicle or a camper?
Both, under this, under this code section.
Okay, it's, I mean, a vehicle to use like a four-door sedan. I just don't want to get it confused because a vehicle can mean a number of things.
Well, I believe the way we amended this in July, it would prohibit someone from sleeping in a car, from camping in a car, RV, camper, tow behind, any of the above.
Right, okay, camp, so a camper could be...
Yes. I mean, it, in my opinion, it would not have to be specifically fit out for habitation to be precluded by this.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I'm okay with if you limit the number of days.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Cahoon?
I concur with the number of days. I'm also concerned about if you have big RVs that people are staying in. We have no dump-out facilities in Nagshead that I'm aware of.
That's a good point.
And that would be a concern because at some point sewage has to go somewhere.
It does.
And since we don't have dump-outs, I would be concerned about having them as structures that are allowed to be used without the proper facilities.
Right, well, in the absence of proper facilities, it happens illegally is what typically happens.
Right.
Right. Commissioner Sears?
I agree with the board.
Okay. So a time limit, a week, I agree, also seems reasonable. I don't know if the other commissioners have any thoughts other than, other than that.
Let me ask clarification. So we're saying no more than seven consecutive days or are we saying a week? Each property is entitled a week within a year?
That gets hard. I mean, I think, I thought the idea was no more than seven consecutive days.
Well, now that you brought that up, I'd say seven consecutive days and no more than 14 or 21 days in a year. I mean, I don't care what that is.
Yeah, okay.
Because I hate for somebody to bring it in, take it out, bring it in, take it out.
Yes, that, that's reasonable. The other question is that, that brought up was if you're limiting the capacity on a site based on the wastewater, this is not something that somebody's going to come in for a permit in advance in order to do this, or they are?
Well, so, and I assume based on the conversation, we are not intending to now allow someone to use an RV. That this would only allow someone to camp in the open air in a tent on a property.
Okay.
So the provision currently in the code would require that those people camping had use of bathroom facilities.
Right, okay, got it.
The, the dump-out, assuming that no one is using a camper in violation of this, shouldn't be as much of a concern.
Right, understood. Okay, all right, good.
Thank you. We'll come back at a future meeting with those amendments.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is item G-2 regarding the Doughty Park Coordinator, Andy.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. So as you recall from your September 2nd meeting, you had a number of individuals speak to you about the importance of events at Doughty Park and supporting the part-time events coordinator position the town currently employs. The board took action later that day to unfreeze that position and asked staff to send a, a letter to the people that spoke, including members of the Arts and Culture Committee, making them aware of the action that she took, and also extending the farmers' market through the end of September, which was done and has now been completed. So I believe the board wanted the opportunity to talk a little bit about this, sort of clarify the position on this.
Yes.
And so that's, that's what this is at this point. You've had, included in your packet, an email from Planning Director Michael Zainer, which, which follows the instruction of the board, and so we're happy to entertain discussion about this.
Okay, great. I, I know others on the board will, may address other aspects of this. One thing that, that has occurred to me and, and I was remiss in not catching this during the meeting and I will also call Attorney Leidy's attention that a number of the speakers repeated the phrase "some members of the board" in their, in their comments. And I would just remind everybody that regardless of how they perceive some member of the board to feel, action here only happens by action of the full board. And we all live with the determinations that this board makes. And, and so I just wanted to make that, make that point, that freezing a position, unfreezing a position is a, was, is and was a board action, not, not the action of any individuals. So for comment, I'll start on that end first. Commissioner Sears?
I do feel that it was taken out of context how it was handled. I don't think the board in general wants to get rid of the spot or any activities at the Doughtys Park. I think there was some questions about the budget for that said activities, but hopefully we have it remedied.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Cahoon?
At the time it first started was when we were in budget talks, but also under an order not to open the park. So that's how the discussion, when it originally got frozen, was whether any point in spending any funds, if you couldn't actually open the park, when the park was able to be opened, we did and unfroze it.
Yep, great, thank you. Commissioner Brinkley?
I'm not going to repeat it, but I agree with both of the commissioners.
Okay, Commissioner Fuller?
I'd, I'd just like to thank the Arts Committee for all they've done for the town. I think they do, do an awful lot and I'd certainly appreciate that. I think the memo that's sent to us makes it extremely clear that the position is positioned in the Planning Department. The one thing also I want to make sure is that the money that's allocated for the arts program is controlled within the budget and it's controlled within the Planning Department, if that's a true statement, which I believe it to be true.
Yes, yes, my understanding as well.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Andy. The next item on our agenda under New Business are the committee reports. And I'll start down here. Commissioner Fuller, do we have any, anything to report to the board?
No, sir.
Mr. Brinkley?
The next year Advisory Committee will either be meeting in person or virtually at the end of this month. There's a three-day window. We'll have the meeting more on Thursdays and I'll report back in November.
Okay. How was the traffic there this summer? I mean, I know that it was kind of a weird season, but...
During the last meeting, I talked about the number of visitors that, that were seen. At the top of my head, it was like 18,000 visitors as soon as they opened in a 30-day, 30-day window.
Yeah.
But I'm hoping once we have our Advisory Committee meeting, we'll have some more information.
Updated numbers, okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cahoon?
This is not necessarily a town one, but it affects the town. Coastal Management is looking about expanding the use of mats for handicap use to the beach. We are encountering some pushback from Fish and Wildlife that, that could be an impediment to turtle season because not only do you want a mat to get people to the beach over the dune line, but you want them actually to be able to go to the beach, not just stop at the dune line. So just to make the town aware that as that comes forward, we may want to take a position as a town on that position to encourage handicap access.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Mr. Sears?
Nothing new in stormwater.
Okay, great, thank you. The next item on our agenda is consideration and appointment or reappointment of, to the Personnel Grievance Panel. Now, we don't have a staff member to speak to this, I don't believe. And so I will ask the board, having that issue before you, what is your pleasure in terms of appointments or reappointments?
Mr. Mayor, I see that Ms. Kramer wishes to be reappointed, but I don't think we have any, I think it said in our memo that there wasn't any other others to consider.
Right.
So with that, I would make a motion that we reappoint Ms. Kramer to the Personnel Grievance Board.
Very good. I have a motion and a second to reappoint Ms. Kramer to the Personnel Grievance Board. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. The next item is the five-year, Fire Department Five-Year Strategic Plan. Chief Wells?
Nagshead Fire Rescue earlier this week submitted to you for your review the five-year strategic plan that we've been working on for the past few months. And needless to say that I've been involved in numerous strategic plans, but this year was especially challenging, given the COVID restrictions. Normally, a strategic plan is, is done with lots of community input and that's why we focused on our, our plan as a community-driven strategic plan. We wanted to get as much of the community input as we possibly could and to make sure that our goals and objectives were aligned with the expectations of the community. So, but how is a short little power plan? Okay. So our strategic plan was based, normally what we would have done is send invitations, gone out into the public and gotten focus groups and sat down and dialogued with them about what their expectations were at levels of service, what we can do for them, how we're perceived. And that was kind of put on hiatus because of the COVID-19 issues. So to maintain social distancing, we used an online survey. And at first, I was a little bit leery of that, but we ended up getting 110 responses, which I believe is a really good number of people responding to our survey. And the survey itself, I thought, was very thorough and had lots of areas where there could be public comment and areas where they were allowed to come in and prioritize what they believed our service levels should be and what their expectations were. So out of that survey and out of those community expectations, we formed our own focus group and then aligned the department's goals and objectives to meet those expectations. And so the first thing we did was we came up and decided what, what did our strategic plan need to do and what did it do for our organization? The first thing we said was it needed to set our priorities. It needed to set our priorities that were aligned with the community's expectation. It allowed us to focus our energies and resources so that we could accomplish those goals and objectives. Then we looked at how that, those, those focused energies and resources could then strengthen our operations and help provide service. It also ensured that our employees and other stakeholders were working towards a common goal. One thing we wanted to make sure that we did was that we didn't work in a vacuum, that we interacted and that we took into account all of the resources that were around us and available to us to make our goals happen. We wanted to get into focusing on outcomes and results, not just focusing on our actions, but true outcomes, what we think will make a difference. We assess and adjust the organization's directions, response to the changing environment. We understand that there are things that change our environment, just like COVID-19. We had to address the change of COVID-19 and we had to make some decisions based purely on that. So we didn't want a document that locked us in to, you have to, have to accomplish these goals within that specific timeframe unless, in case the environment changed drastically. So that was what we decided the organization, or what the plan should do for us and should do for the community. One of the first things we looked at was we had developed a mission, our mission, early on with about a year, and we revisited it. We wanted to make sure that we currently were focused on the mission of the fire service. And that involved a lot of talking and soul-searching. And the one thing that we came up with was what was, what were we truly charged to do? And I sat back and let the focus group really work this out and was very impressed with the work that they came up with. They came up with a mission as to protect the people, property, environment of the Town of Nagshead with courage, com- of NAGS Ed with courage, commitment, and compassion. And I think you're going to see that that's going to be a running theme throughout our whole organization, courage, commitment, compassion. And we actually had to reword our statement because we wanted to make sure that people came first. We wanted to make sure that our organization was people-facing and citizen-facing and visitor-facing and make sure that we were on mission. The next thing we did was develop our vision. And the vision was to achieve the highest levels of community service and protection by delivering outstanding customer service in all that we do. Now, some people would say that's the tagline, but that feeds directly into us developing ourselves as a high-performance organization. And we discussed numerous ways to do that and came up with a model that we're going to follow. And we believe that customer service isn't just putting out fires. It's everything. It is helping people down a set of stairs when they've had a medical problem. It is doing what we can, when we can, to make our community better. Next thing, we came up with our core values. To be a truly value-driven organization is a very powerful thing. It allows our employees to know what we value, what we cherish, and also what behaviors are going to be associated with the values that we cherish. So we came up with to serve the community through courage, commitment, and compassion. And we believe they build on each other, and that's what we're going to use to keep ourselves, our organization, focused and in line with the town's values. The last thing, one of the other things we did was set organizational priorities. Now, the organizational priorities were based out of the input we received from the citizens. We took the citizens, we had a list of 40 activities that the Fire Department did and provided and services, placed them in a matrix, and then we had to find a way to put all of those, all of their inputs and all of their expectations into about the nine functions that the fire service truly can provide. And this is the list that we came up with in priority order, and it's in the packet and the scores are in the plan itself. Fire suppression, of course, being number one, emergency medical services. We had to break down rescue, basic and technical. The plan in itself includes ocean rescue as part of the department, and we... Ocean rescue was a very high priority for our department, our town, our citizens, and we 100% are in support of that. But to actually make it fit within the town, our priorities, that was pulled into the technical side of rescue. So that's where they fell. Fire investigation, hazards, materials mitigation. One of the areas that we focused on was our domestic preparedness. We recently went through a tabletop exercise and found that we need to do some work on our domestic preparedness, not just hurricanes, but an all-hazards approach to keeping the citizens safe. We looked at wildland and brush firefighting. We really look at that as a, going to be a growing trend. If you look at what's going on in California, they're having their first giga fire in the history of California firefighting. And a lot of communities don't take that risk into their overall planning. And we wanted to just make sure that we hit all of those hazards. The next two, public education, community risk reduction. There was numerous activities within the community risk model and the citizen profile. And what ended up happening was they, what we found is the community really didn't understand that that was part of the job for the Fire Department, so we wanted to focus on that. When we say community risk reduction, in my mind, as a fire officer and as fire chief and a firefighter, I believe that there are absolutely jobs I have to do that, you know, commanding an incident and looking at technical rescues and all those things are important. But I must always be looking for ways to reduce the risk in my community. And that should be the mission of every firefighter at every point in time, is to find ways to reduce the risk to our community. And we really wanted to get into some community engagement. I think you're going to see over the next five years, we're going to focus on community engagement and working hard to make sure that we are engaged in the community fully, we're being transparent with our communications, and that we are actually meeting their needs and listening. So our objectives, we came up with six of them, and we wanted to make sure that they were action-oriented. We didn't want this to be a document that sits on the shelf. We wanted this to be a document that spurs us to action and provides you and our community with results. The first one we looked at was provide highly-trained emergency responders to match the response needs of our community. And we believe that we're going to do that through objective one. That then feeds into the next one, which is conduct a staffing analysis to establish a staffing model for the town of NAGS Ed and make sure that the staffing model and staffing analysis takes into account all of the internal and external factors and that it aligns with the town's vision of what the Fire Department needs to be. The next was to ensure the department has the physical resources to meet the current projected needs of the community. Again, another survey, a methodical process through each and everything we do and the tools we need to accomplish that mission. And then just make sure that what we have matches the needs and the requests. The next one is to create a comprehensive community outreach program to better align our efforts with our citizens' expectations. And that's going to take some work, both internally and externally, for us to get out there and really develop those relationships and make sure we're doing what the citizens want. And then improve our disaster preparedness. We've already talked a little bit about that in every area. The last one is to explore the possibility of international accreditation. That in itself is one of those things where people will say, well, why do you want to become accredited? Or if you want to become accredited, why would you want to do that? And I would then come back to say, it's not that we're going to go after a sticker to put on our trucks. It's not that we're going to do that. It's that we're going to go through a process of evaluating our organization and benchmarking our organization against like departments. And then look at what we're doing and then prove that what we're doing is effective via outcomes. And then if we decide to pursue international accreditation, if that's the goal, is then pursue it with vigor and become data-driven and outcome-based. And that's the gist of our plan. And I know that it is a long document, but we are very proud of it. I am very proud of our staff that worked on it. We had 10 firefighters mentioned in the plan that worked hard. This past captain's meeting, Commissioner Fuller, you'll be happy to know, we assigned names to objectives. So we have accountability started. And within the next few, within the next captain's meeting, we'll have timelines, but we want to make sure that we're doing it correct. So again, I'm very proud of our strategic plan. I believe it is going to map a way forward for our department, and we hope that it meets your expectations.
Before I turn it over to the board for questions and observations, when you mentioned domestic preparedness, I thought you were going to go to households at first. And then my question, though, is because we are a resort community, because of the type of housing that we have, do you envision having specific plans for engaging that part of the public, those visitors, those homeowners, to improve the safety in those rental facilities as well?
We would put that under community risk reduction, and we understand that our community is a very fluid community. The population rises. We have people from all walks of life. And our goal would be to make sure that we help educate them and do what we can to prevent any of the fires and accidents and medical emergencies and surf rescues that we possibly could come in place with. So, yes, sir.
Great. Thank you. I'll start this end this time. Commissioner Fuller?
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. But let me get through a scenario. I'm just trying to figure something out.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Under your vision, you talk about customer service.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Under your organizational priorities, you have nine specific things.
Yes, sir.
Now, square this with me.
Okay.
How does the Fire Department, or what does the Fire Department do if you get a call from a senior citizen that needs help getting up and down the stairs? It doesn't fit under any of those nine organizational priorities that I see.
Yeah.
But it does fit under customer service.
It does.
Okay. So, under those nine areas, I don't see where it fits at all unless you can show me how it does. But then, at what point, and this is real. This is a real situation. This happened on the beach. At what point do you not go to that person's house anymore and help them up and down the stairs?
Well, I would say that that is a holistic approach, and that specific scenario falls under community risk reduction because that citizens pay their taxes, they deserve our services. So we're going to go and help them basically because our organization is compassionate and that we don't want them to have a risk of a fall. We don't want them to make things worse. So we're going to go and do that as a community risk portion. And I could see that when we would not do that is if we took a look at, is this a chronic problem? Is this something that is happening all of the time? Then we need to find ways to get them engaged in the system of help beyond just the fire service, Department of Human Services, nursing services, and engage them in that manner.
So if it's two times a day, how long would you do that?
Until we could get them into the system and get some help, until we absolutely can't make it happen. We'll do it until we find an answer for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Brinkley?
Chief, thank you for the report. Very detailed, and I like the plan that you've laid out. Just one question on accreditation. You came from a very large department before your previous employment. Were y'all accredited there?
No, sir. But we were working, we were looking at it. We're exploring it.
And you had how many employees there?
454.
If it's anything like law enforcement accreditation, I don't know if it is. I'm just, I know law enforcement accreditation, and I know it takes a lot of time and a lot of money. Most agencies that I've heard, they have an accreditation manager that is a full-time employee that works nothing on accreditation. And when I looked at it for the police department, you were basically setting your standards for assessors to come in to review your organization.
Yes, sir.
To me, I think it's up to the citizens of our community to see how our organization is doing. I'm still open. I'll certainly listen to any proposal for accreditation, but I do have some concerns about that, just looking at expense and time. But again, thank you for the report and the staff that participated in it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Cahoon?
Thank you for your plan. It looks to be very thorough. I just have a couple of questions. I did not see any mention in your strategic plan or goals of volunteers. Are we not doing volunteer firefighters anymore?
We actually have just brought onboard another volunteer Monday. He just came in. And that was another focus of the workforce, was we need to figure out a way to move and get volunteers into the system. And we recognize that that's an organizational weakness, and we're going to work on it.
How many volunteers do we currently have on our roster?
Four. We just, we lost one and gained one, all within the past week.
Okay. And the other thing, a couple of years ago, there was an assessment made of the Fire Department with a report. I don't, I, as a board member, didn't see anything back. Could we get something back as to how those concerns were addressed? And are they part of the strategic plan?
Yes, ma'am. I think in the first few months of being here, I produced a report on how we were going to address those 10 objectives that were found in the Environment Safety Report. But I believe that by following this plan, we will more than meet any of the shortcomings that were addressed in that plan, in that assessment.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thanks for the work, chief. I look forward to seeing how you're going to implement everything.
Thank you, sir.
Yep. Great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the Beach Monitoring Survey Report. May I suggest that we take a short break before they commence? So the board will take about a 10-minute recess. The board has returned from its break, and we were on item H4, the Annual Beach Monitoring Survey Report. David?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners. At your June 3, 2020 meeting, the board approved professional service contracts for McKimmon Creed, for beach surveying services, and also to Moffett and Nickel for coastal engineering services. The scope of work was broken up into several tasks. Task one being an annual beach monitoring survey, which was comprised of both land and water-based surveys, along with supplemental engineering analysis. Task two was comprised of year one of a multi-decadal beach nourishment master plan. Task three consisted of engineering support for coastal storm damage mitigation grant application. And task four consisted of post-dorian beach restoration engineering support services. So here today, to go ahead and give you an update as to the progress of those tasks, is Mr. Johnny Martin and Mr. Brian Joyner of the engineering firm Moffett and Nickel.
Thanks, David, and good to see all of y'all. And you said I could just do it with this mouse here? Okay. All right, good. All right. So, one, we'll kind of, I know you needed the bathroom break because, you know, when engineers speak, we can't speak too quickly, but we're going to try to make this as quickly as we can. But there is a lot to go over, so me and Brian will do our best. But first, I want to start off with some of the overall project progress that David was just doing and get into some of the data collection, the project methodology, some of the key events that really affected the beach over the last year, as well as sort of our summary of findings. And then Brian will also even go into the master plan update, and then we'll have some Q and A. So just overall, for the annual beach monitoring, that's now 100% complete. As far as what's going on with the master plan, there is a lot of data that we've been getting from the previous consultant, so that data collection review is roughly about 50% complete. Task two within the master plan is some of the modeling and development of the nourishment needs. That's roughly about 25% complete, we estimate. We've completed the GENCADE model calibration. The GENCADE model is the one that sort of simulates longshore transport. So a lot of times when we're talking coastal engineering, we'll talk about the sand that's moving up and down the beach, as well as on and off the beach. So a longshore transport is the stuff going up and down the beach, north and south, and the crossshore is the onshore-offshore. So we've begun the seashore beach profile setup, and that, of course, will be the onshore-offshore, looking at storm impacts and things of that nature. As far as the CSDN grant process, we're awaiting notification from the state on that, but we hope that we will know for sure, something within the next two to three days. So I'll start with the data collection. So again, this being the first year, and then so many things happening, we actually did a little bit more analysis in this study, or this year's work, because we needed to take into account the summer survey that McKimmon Creed did for us, as well as then looking at the post-dorian survey, how much change has happened from post-dorian to now. The summer survey that CSNE did, because again, the monitoring report is really a year-to-year, so the basis of it is looking from the 2019 summer survey to now. But then there was a nourishment action that happened just before that. So again, when Brian gets into a lot of our discussion, you'll see we tried to break up things about what's happened over the last year, but then what's happened, you know, in between each one of those steps. So another thing that we'll say, talk about here is the nourished oceanfront versus the total monitored oceanfront. So when you see that information, you'll see some of the tables in the report when we turn that in. You'll see that we kind of broke down some of the results from the nourished oceanfront is where the beach is nourished. the nourished oceanfront is where the beach is nourished, or where the nourishment is placed, but then also the total monitored oceanfront, which includes some of the areas in Nagshead North, as well as south of the town limits that gets down into the National Park Service. And actually, this year, we added a number of profiles, as you guys know, just so that we could get sort of consistent distances between those, and especially getting some more detailed information in the hotspot area, because we really want to try to start getting a feel of how that's happening. Again, we made those recommendations based on the fact, and looking at some of the historical data over time, you would see these sort of big shifts even at 500-foot spacing, so that's why we went to a narrower spacing in that area. So, the survey was performed by McKimmon Creed, as David said. This is some of the equipment that they use. I'll go into the project methodology. So, of course, we measured the shoreline change at mean high water, which is roughly 1.0, we should just say 1.2, but just, you know, but 1.18 feet in AVD. We just want to keep it consistent with what's been done in the past. So, there again, you will see that that elevation is roughly right here along the shoreface, and then we kind of denoted the beach berm here. I'll talk a little bit about some of the nomenclature that we use in some of these coastal engineering analysis here in a second. But in addition to the shoreline change, we also do volume change calculations, and we look at that to kind of measure how much the beach face and the volume is changing at different elevations. So, we do it from the top of the dune out to plus six, which is really, you know, the berm elevation, we go out to mean high water, minus six, which is approximately the weighting depth, what we say, minus 14, which is the outer bar, minus 19, which has sort of been set as the depth of closure here for, you know, all the projects that have been done in the past, minus 30, which is even further offshore. And what we do is we calculate, and we use these volumes for calculating the volume changes, as well as updating background erosion rates. So, again, why is this important? Because again, this is your, this is your protection. This is the way I kind of like to, you know, talk about this, is this sort of area of sand is what absorbs wave energy, it's what's protecting your oceanfront infrastructure. So, what we want to do is, we do want to see, okay, how is this changing over time with, you know, the vol, this volume above plus six, roughly the berm elevation, mean high water, out at minus six, out at minus 14, and then going out to 19. There again, as Brian will show you here in a little bit, you know, the shoreface is really what is really what's taking the brunt of the storm impacts and moving material, in some cases, up onto the beach, as well as offshore. It has been a fairly active season here, you know, since the August 19 survey. We had Hurricane Dorian that had some offshore wave measurements of roughly 14.6 feet, so this is up at the Duck Pier. But we also had the nor'easter storm that you see here, and it actually had higher wave heights than the, than the Dorian event. As Brian will show you, you know, there was a lot of change that happened in between the August survey and Dorian. You know, some of that is probably due to the storm impacts, of course, as well as some of the natural equilibration of the beach face, you know, right after these events.
Johnny, just real quick, is there any significance to the dotted line at eight and 12?
It's just something that we kind of are, you know, looking at, and, you know, just kind of seeing how often it got above those, you know, it looks, that was just sort of a visual thing that we did there, just to kind of see, okay, these larger events. As we get more into the modeling, we'll be able to see if there's some of these types of events that really are important, as far as moving at the amount of sand as part of the master plan. But right now, this was just sort of a visual thing to say, you know, okay, it looks like only above minus eight is when we're getting into something, you know, fairly significant, and then, you know, something really significant above elevation 12. So, that was just a visual. But as we get more and more into the study of the master plan, we'll be developing some statistics to kind of be able to quantify, you know, some of these different breakpoints. Of course, you also had the nourishment event in 2019 that placed roughly 4 million cubic yards along 10 miles of the beach. And I'm going to turn it over to Brian now to kind of go over sort of the summary, summary of findings.
All right. Thanks, Johnny, for the setup and explanation of terms. So, I'll point the mic at myself. I'm not so loud, so you can understand. So, we get into what we, what we found from the, from the data that was surveyed in June of this year. We basically, we found volume that was out there, shoreline that was out there, but it's really meaningful when we compare it back to what happened right after the nourishment project, which was surveyed in August last year, and then right after Dorian, or the post-Dorian survey in November of last year. And there's a couple of key takeaways. They're not bullets on the slide, I'll just like verbalize those. The key takeaways are, as you've seen, as your public has seen, the shoreline has receded since, the shoreline's come back landward since the nourishment project ended last year. The number's a little small, but on average, about 90 feet landward recession in the nourished area, and about, if you take the larger extents of the town, the surveyed area, it's, the average goes down, but still about 80 to 90 feet of recession over the last year. And you see that in the volume change that people can see. So, the volume of the beach that you can see above mean high water or mean low water has also decreased pretty substantially over the last year. And as we'll see in a moment, most of that, in fact, almost all of that was due to Hurricane Dorian. And we actually saw a recovery, gain of sand in that visible area since Dorian to now, or to the summer. And the other takeaway is, even though there was loss where you can see the beach, there's actually relatively little loss and/or gain in the overall beach system out to what we call depth of closure, so where the profiles kind of tie together, where we expect normal year-to-year wave action to move sand. So, of the sand that you placed last year, it varies reach to reach north and south along the beach, but as a system as a whole, most or all of that sand is still there in the system, available to absorb wave energy and to maybe migrate back and forth into the bar. So, we'll try to illustrate that in a moment. We have the numbers here, I won't go through them. We have them for discussion if we need to. The first column here documents the shoreline change from north to south. Top of the table is north, bottom of the table is south, near the inlet, and the green area here is the nourished oceanfront, so where you actually placed the sand last summer. And again, it just documents reach by reach, how the shoreline changed. We'll take that into a bar graph, though, it's just easier to see at this scale. So, the north end of the town is on the left of the bar graph, reach one, that's the longest reach. We use the reaches that, that are documented in the nourishment plan, so how Great Lakes reported the sand, how previous consultants broke the beach down. So, the first third or so of the town is reach one, reach two is a long reach there in the middle of town, and then reach three and four are getting closer to the hotspot area at the south end of town. And you can see, the green line is the shoreline position, the shoreline position right after nourishment was completed last year, from a baseline. And the red bar is how far the shoreline receded, so is the shoreline position right after the Dorian survey, post-Dorian survey. You can see a fair bit of shoreline recession due to the hurricane. And the blue bar is the shoreline position as surveyed this summer. So, not a lot of change, actually. A little bit more recession in the north end of town, fairly stable in the middle of town, more recession relative in the south end of town. But again, the bulk of that change in the shoreline was due to Hurricane Dorian. If we go to volume change, it's complicated to show on any one graph, we're just illustrating the variability in the volume change over the beach from the north end of town on the right of the figure, south end of town toward the left of the figure, and then the inlet all the way over to the extreme left on the, on the map. Volume change is very noisy. It's a very noisy signal when we measure that transect by transect by transect. So, we try to categorize that in reaches or groups. Again, we have a table, we can dig into the numbers if there are questions. The numbers at the bottom of the table, especially in the green row here, summarize what happened over the entire nourished oceanfront, so where you actually place sand. There was a gain of approximately 100,000 yards, a couple hundred thousand yards in the beach above the berms, so up around plus five, plus six feet and up into the dune, where people would generally be sitting on the beach, recreating, and walking through the dune. There was a gain there overall throughout the year. I'll kind of illustrate why we think that happened in a moment. As I said, there was a loss of on the order of a million, one and a half yards between, basically, the mean high water shoreline and out past the sandbar. There was a loss of sand in that area that migrated slightly further offshore, but overall, above about minus 19, minus 20 feet, where the sort of profile starts to tie together year after year after year, the depth of closure, there was a gain over the entire year, even considering the effects of Hurricane Dorian, of about 200, 250, 300,000 yards over the entire nourished oceanfront. Trying to illustrate that a little more graphically in a moment. But the reason we think that, what we believe happened, what's usually borne out by modeling and other, other analysis that we do, is on the beach, when you have a nourished beach, you create a much wider dry beach. When you have a wide, dry beach, sand, wind can move the sand around, and waves can also push sand a little bit further back up on the beach when they're not massive storm waves. As the wind and the waves move the sand up, the wind can blow the sand up into the dune, so we see a red arrow moving back landward on this figure, which we believe that a lot of the gain in the dune was due to the fact you have a wide, dry beach, and sand can move up into the dune that way. At the same time, you have storm waves and just all the, the waves that Johnny, that were on Johnny's slide and that Commissioner Fuller asked about, between that, maybe eight to 12-foot wave height range, you can start seeing sand pulled off the beach and out into deeper depths, like around the sandbar. So, where we see the sand loss, it's sand moving to the right on the figure, out into deeper water to the sandbar, but eventually being captured, as we saw in the data, above about minus 19, minus 20 feet. So, what is observed with the eye when you walk out on the beach is a big loss here in the edge of the beach, inner tidal zone, down to mean low water, it looks like there was a lot lost, but a lot of that sand is actually still there, which we see as the value of taking these very long profiles, and a lot of them along the beach. If we take it elevation by elevation, so imagine you're standing on the beach, near the back of the beach, looking landward. If you could judge it with your eye, you'd see a gain in volume from the end of the nourishment condition. You can see this green bar here, that's what it was at the end of the nourishment last year, and the blue bar indicates gain back in the dune. And we saw that all along the beach, but less of it down in the southern end of town, more of it in the north end of town. If you are looking above mean high water, so if you're out at the edge of the, if you're out at the edge of the water at mid-tide, looking back at the beach, if you could see it, you would see a loss from the end of nourishment to after Dorian, you would see most of that loss, and then a little bit of gain, actually, in the north end of town from Dorian to now. Same thing in the middle of town, and even down toward the south end of town, getting near the hotspot. And only really in the hotspot did we see a loss throughout the year, did we see a loss after Dorian from that condition, above mean high water, above the shoreline. Looking above minus 19, though, so this depth of closure, where, when we do our modeling, where we see just physically in profiles throughout our experience, you know, the sand remains in the system, it moves back and forth, sometimes back toward the beach, and is still available to mitigate wave action. We saw at the end of, in the north end of town, at the end of nourishment, this green bar, and actually a gain of, I think, I think the number's like 40% more, no, no, 40%, about 14% more, sand in the system in the north end of town than there was when you finished the nourishment project last summer. And a similar story in the middle of town, you can see Dorian in the middle was a loss and then a gain back. Near the hotspot, middle to south end of town, about the same amount of sand in the system as there was right at the end of nourishment. And then only really in the hotspot area at the south end of town did you, did we see an actual loss for the whole year net of sand as it migrates south toward the state park. Just another way of looking at all that data together for the whole oceanfront, and we've been through the story, we can refer back to this in a minute, but a gain above six, a loss around the shoreline, but then a total net gain on the far-right bars is the above depth of closure gained throughout the whole system for the year. I'm going to hop through that, and that. We, we've been talking about volumes in absolute numbers so far, cubic yards, but it helps because the reaches are different lengths. So, reach one of town is, is a very long reach that acts a certain way. Reach three and four at the south end of town in the hotspot are much shorter because things change much more quickly. So, when we talk about absolute volume yardage, it's hard to compare the numbers. But if we compare it on a cubic yards per foot, so how many, how much volume is in a given slice of the shoreline, it's easier to compare them together. And we saw this one, to me, definitely illustrates, and the easiest one to see is the purple bar in the middle, the volume loss. As you move along the beach in a given slice, it's less in the north end of town, in the middle end of town, and much greater down in the hotspot area, which we knew from experience, but this is a way to document it and try to explain it, illustrate it. We did compute, I won't get into the numbers in the table. In addition to just looking at volume change over the last year in preparation for taking this data into the master plan, the multi-decadal master plan, the giant method, we needed to compute the background beach erosion rates. So, what is the long-term in the absence of nourishment, which changes obviously the beach position, but in the absence of nourishment, the long-term erosion rates have been calculated. They vary a little bit along the beach. So, we'll have that data to go forward. And we did look also at long-term changes in the dune, so above the back of the beach, above about plus six feet. As part of the master plan, we're going to be looking at what protection does the beach, but more, and more especially the dune in front of structures, the dune in front of infrastructure. How robust is that? How much is that dune growing year by year, or shrinking? And I apologize, the yellow showed up a lot better on my computer screen than it does on this distance chart here. But we computed the change in the dune volume from 2011 to about 2018 using moving average, trying to smooth it out and understand trends, and found that except for a couple of spots, one up pretty much opposite Jockeys Ridge in the north, and one down in the hotspot in the south, the dune over time is actually growing, gaining volume year by year, which is good. That'll definitely feed into our study and recommendations of what to do with the master plan. And then having these two areas that we know it's not growing and/or shrinking in any given year will let us come up with mitigation options or ways to manage that dune volume so that we can provide, I think we mentioned back in the summer when we first talked about this project, a way to approach this is try to provide equal protection along the beach, at least, you know, so we're providing a level of protection from a certain kind of nor'easter or a certain kind of hurricane in the north, as well as in the south and in the hotspot. So, this data helps us to come up with strategies to manage that. Before I go into the master plan update, I'll just, I guess I should stop and ask you a few questions on all that data, because we're changing subjects here in a minute.
Mr. Martin, do you feel that any of that growth on the north end of the beach is a result of the beach nourishment to our north?
It could be, but, you know, I think that it would, it takes a while for those kind of, for that material to come down. I mean, the fact that it's been a few years, maybe you are getting some of that material that is coming into the system. I know that there's like this gap, but, you know, that is probably helping some. As far as when we get into the modeling and whatnot, and we are really kind of able to get a sense of those longshore rates, we'll be able to see how much of that is maybe due to that longshore transport versus sort of the building of the wind and everything else as you guys put this material back out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Just a real quick update on the master plan process itself. We have started into that. Johnny covered a lot of it, just to illustrate, there's multiple phases. There's the data collection and analysis phase, which we think we're about halfway through. We still have some sediment data to look at, to try to make sure that the identified and permitted borrow areas offshore, that they contain the amount of sand that we think they contain, and that all that sand's going to be useful for a 30- to 50-year beach nourishment program, so we know whether we, whether or not we need to look for other sand to accomplish whatever goals were set through the process. And then, we're about 25% complete with some of the modeling and analysis that gets us to the point of knowing about how much sand you would need year to year and over the decades to carry out this program. We're working on the seashore stuff this week, trying to understand, you know, how much protection dudes offer, so that we can make some good recommendations about that. And those two tasks, we've committed to have those complete and be able to present back to you on some findings by early spring. Certainly, there'll be interim updates before that to town staff, and then we'll certainly answer any questions you have on that or other stuff in the meantime. So, I think that's the end of my presentation. Is there any additional questions?
Any additional questions, board? Observations? Great. Thank you. Commissioner Coon made an observation that I'll, that I'll echo. Like the way you guys described this, you talked about weighting depths and physical aspects of the beach nourishment that people can see and kind of relate to, and not just numbers. We find that to be really helpful, and it certainly can also help us communicate these ideas to the public when that becomes necessary.
That'll be real key when we get into the master plan and all of that, too, because, again, you know, there's always this, I'm sorry, it's probably, please.
And the reason to also do that is be tracking not only at 19, but some of And the reason to also do that is be tracking not only at 19, but some of these areas that people visually can kind of touch and feel, and that's what they see, right? Because you know, it's one thing to talk about things at the real, but you know, you need to talk about why these things are different at the various elevations. And you know, as far as, as far as some of the, the master plan stuff and we're looking at triggers, I mean, we will not only be looking at, you know, what do we need to have on a cubic yard per foot basis above 19, but we also want to be looking at, okay, what would that be at 14 and what would it be at six? Because depending on how this may go, you know, we may change the way some of these nourishment triggers are, are set up.
Right, yep.
I'm very appreciative of that. I think our citizens will be too, rather than talking about a sandbox, relatable benchmarks of where we need to be. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda would be item I, referrals to a presentation from the town attorney. Mr. Whitey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Although I do request a closed session, there's one item I want to bring to your attention while we're in open session. That is relating to the lawsuit that was filed by Mr. and Mrs. Blackburn against the county and all the Dare County municipalities. You may recall that that lawsuit was dismissed by the court a couple of weeks ago. Yesterday, we learned that the Blackburns have filed an appeal in that action to the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals. So now that matters proceeding in the appeal process. Don't have any other comment about it other than that, just so you'd be aware that that case is still ongoing because of that appeal.
Did they provide a basis for their appeal?
They did not, and they don't have to at this stage. They don't have to until they file their brief with the Court of Appeals, which will be in about 35, 40 days, something like that.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question? Who are they represented by in council?
The, the plaintiffs are represented by Lloyd Smith from Windsor, but interestingly, he's been on the pleadings in this case, but now with the notice of appeal, a law firm from Kentucky has been associated. I'm not familiar with it, I'm not sure why other counsel's been involved at this point. I don't know if that's because they're somehow representing some of the other potential plaintiffs in the case, just can't comment on that because I don't know at this point.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you. Next item on our agenda is item J from the town manager, Andy.
The item that we have for you today is an update on the Waste Reduction Task Force, as we're calling it now. This is the task force the board set up several months ago to look at the town's solid waste and recycling and waste reduction programs. As the board recalls, that charge for this task force is fairly broad. They're looking at a lot of different things that we do. We have had two meetings, they've been very productive so far. The first meeting, we essentially reviewed some of the baseline information from the town's annual solid waste report, which we prepare, helps them understand all the programs that we have in place, you know, residential, commercial, CND, vegetative debris, bulk, you know, items that we're recycling, items that are going to the landfill, sort of helps them get a, get a baseline of everything we do. And from there, we can sort of, sort of drill into the things that will help us reduce waste as a town. We provided them a presentation, I think we've got that online now. That meeting led to a second meeting where we actually had two speakers come via Zoom to talk to the committee. One of the things the committee identified or task force identified is, you know, talking about recycling markets and what's happening to material. So we had Tad Phillips with the TFC speak to the committee. Tidewater Fibers, one of the biggest players in Hampton Roads, they have a materials recovery facility, and he's been in the industry about 40 years, has a lot of knowledge about what's happened in the past, what's happening now, and what's happening in the future. Very knowledgeable, committee really appreciated his presentation. His message essentially was that things are still being recycled, there's markets for things, you know, glass is going to Wilson, North Carolina, a lot of material goes to Europe now, cardboard, there's a high market for cardboard, aluminum, there's a high market for, for things. So he, he felt like the biggest change is that now it's costing more money to process the material, as the board is well aware. So you know, that's sort of an adjustment for a lot of people. Domestic, domestically, things are adjusting and will continue to adjust, and hopefully markets will continue to expand. But for the foreseeable future, there will be a cost to processing, and that's just a reality that we've already experienced and will continue to experience. With that said, he did think the subscription model is, is a good model for the Outer Banks when you have a lot of seasonal people. The subscribers are generally gonna be people that participate heavily, and they're the ones that are gonna have the cleanest material. Certainly there, there are other models to look at. The committee has asked us to provide them with some data and some case studies of what other communities are doing. TFC just signed a contract with Duck for three years to do their recycling. So that's, that's something we'll continue to look at, and there, there might be different alternatives that we'll present to the board for those different things. One of the things that we're honing in on, too, is commercial, and with Mike Norris on board, he's, he's helpful in looking at a lot of this information. Next month, we'll probably present the committee with some information about how we can leverage providing commercial businesses with additional ways to collect cardboard and ABC glass. Because we're doing that now for, for a limited number of businesses, but the more we expand that, the more that's gonna save the town money. We're paying tipping fees for commercial, it's about equal to the residential, and the more we can pull out and send to the county, we don't pay any tipping fees for the glass and for the cardboard. So our, our goal, and the committee really appreciated this, was to, to leverage the amount of cardboard and recycling we're collecting at the commercial level, and that, that can be collected clean. So it, it's a good way to, to do that, and it's low-hanging fruit. We also had Matt James with Division of Environmental Assistance and Customer Service, a state agency that deals with recycling, present to the committee. They're, they're not just focused on recycling, they're also focused on waste production, and they have several grant programs that are available to local governments, and so he talked a little bit about that. Composting is a hot topic nowadays, and so he talked about several different communities that have composting programs. So I think that they're probably gonna look into different alternatives to provide composting services to the community, whether it's just purely a home-based program or whether we offer a place to take it. You know, those are types of things that they're looking at. Obviously, food waste is, is very heavy and dense and provides a lot of weight, and so taking that out of the waste stream would help economically. And so that's one thing they wanna look at. There's more work to be done at the committee level, but I do see things starting to emerge where I feel confident that they're gonna come up with some good recommendations for the board by the spring. So that's the report we have for you today.
I heard things that I would have hoped I would hear in, in that. So other board members, Commissioner Fuller?
I appreciate what you're talking about, the low-hanging fruit, the cardboard and the ABC glass. And then at the beginning, when you first spoke, you said something about a presentation that the committee saw, and that it was online. What are you referring to with that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we, well, staff put together a PowerPoint presentation for the committee, and so we have it set up online, and you know, I can certainly distribute that to the board as well. It was something we gave to the committee as part of their packet.
I'd be curious to see it, but if it's online, I can certainly access it that way.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Coon?
No, I mean, great presentation. It's interesting to hear about the ABC glass and the cardboard. One of the things I'd like for us possibly to look at is, I know the ABC glass goes out, what I see in my neighborhood anyway, in the blue recycling containers, but do we have containers available that we pick up commercially for cardboard? Are they just a different kind of dumpster, or what are we doing?
Yeah, I think we're looking at providing additional dumpsters for commercial to collect, you know, and make it sort of a single material collection and expanding on that. So whether that's a bulk container like a dumpster or individual containers, Mike Norris is looking at trying to set up one-on-one meetings with the businesses and go over that.
That'd be great.
And try to provide that service. And I, I think that's, any message that I can convey from him is that that's what he really would like to do, is create more relationships with the businesses, have one-on-one meetings and really not only help them figure out what they can recycle, but you know, dealing with their dumpster pad and location and setting that up for a front-load collection.
Yeah, it's real difficult.
I think he just wants to get in to having meetings with people.
That would be great.
Yep, look forward to it. Thank you.
Andy, who's hitting that up for the staff?
I am.
Thanks for the work.
You're welcome, certainly.
Absolutely. All right, thanks, Andy. Appreciate that. Good, good progress. All right, the next thing on our agenda is the Board of Commissioners' agenda, and I know I have two commissioners who I know have items, but I'll start down at the end. Commissioner Sears, do you have anything at this point? Commissioner Coon?
Yes, thank you very much. I know the town, many, it's probably been a couple decades ago at least, did a lighting study as we developed a lighting ordinance, and during that intervening time, I think standards have changed very much in the industry. LEDs are very prevalent and so forth, not the so-called halogen ones that we had back then. But it has occurred to me this summer, looking at a pink monstrosity of light, that perhaps it's time for us to consider doing a new lighting study based on new standards and update our ordinances based on that study. It's always good to have everything based on science, but I think we need to do that. I've had a numerable complaints from within the town, in the water, and across the water from Roanoke Island about a new business in town, the candy store. It's inordinately bright and pink. It just glares everywhere. I think Commissioner Brinkley sent me a picture from a boat one time, and, but I think the board, I'm asking the board to consider moving forward with a new lighting study and getting the results back for us to consider.
Great. Thank you.
Go.
Yes.
I just wanted, I had a thought the other day, and I think we're happy to do that. One thing that did occur to me is we may wanna also look at signage limits. As part of our work plan for this year, we had anticipated looking at rewriting or at least updating our sign ordinance. So if it's appropriate for the board, we can certainly look at that in concert with lighting and the relationship between the two. And I do, do wanna clarify, when you're asking in terms of a lighting study, is that more technical or is that more looking at best practices from a regulatory standpoint?
Speaking for myself, I'd say both.
Okay.
I think the much we can do with technical, because it's a lot easier sometimes to write an ordinance based on technical knowledge.
Sure.
Whereas we did a number of lumens and that kind of stuff, and keeping it on-site and off-site. But I think you're right about the signage component, because all of that backlit signage is extremely bright.
Sure.
So, but I'd say combine the two.
Yeah, so one of the things that I observed when we had our retreat, which was, you know, a lot of the things that we asked for in the town of Nags Head are aesthetic, and I wondered, you know, when we were talking about a lighting study, you know, foot candles on the ground is one thing.
It's the intensity of the source.
But they might, they might meet that standard and still look like hell, so.
I think they do. They probably meet our standard.
Yeah, they probably do. So I, I think you, you know, and it, I think it's right to look at lighting and signs and take that aesthetic consideration, which is in our comprehensive plan to an adequate degree, I think, to enable you to take that look and, and kind of address the issue holistically.
Yeah, and you know, with respect to signage and sign lighting, there are communities, communities that I've been involved with that don't allow for internally illuminated signs. They, they require the use of gooseneck lighting, essentially. And then others that they do allow internally illuminated signs, but they don't allow them to be directly illuminated. They're called halo lit signs, where the light emanates around the border, so you're not directly illuminating from, from the face of the sun.
From the back, yeah.
Correct, right.
This is just a new concept that we've seen on a different business in town compared to what the internally, most, a lot of businesses do have internally illuminated signs, but not to that degree.
Sure.
I think maybe a lot of older businesses are old-fashioned and, you know, care about the town per se. They've been here for a long time, and their values really do address some of the town values. And I think somebody coming in that's different from another area that encourages everything and anything, such as Virginia Beach and so forth, and that's just not our character.
Well, I think it's important because as times move forward, you're not gonna have those older lights to choose from either.
That's right.
Yes.
It, it is important, I do wanna mention, there was a state statutory change over the last year and a half. It's referred to as 160D, and it's a recodification of essentially the zoning-enabling authority and acts. That is programmed as well, and I just wanna make it, you know, set an expectation, at some point in the next year, we'll have to update our ordinances to reference all of the new references to that. So we're talking in terms of when does that come forward? When does something like this come forward? Does this come first? And then we go through that effort. So we'll, we'll come up with a good timeline to kind of manage all of that and make sure that we fit this in appropriately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Commissioner Brinkley?
Mayor, thank you. Under my agenda, I know we all received a letter from some residents, the Jockeys Ridge, Soundside Road, South Ridge Community. I wanted to acknowledge, you know, receipt of that. The concerns that they had were overcrowding and traffic, parking in and around the Jockeys Ridge, Soundside access. In their letter and also from my knowledge of, of it, and I'm sure Commissioner Fuller, this was established back in 1991, so we've got 29 years it's passed. So I think it'd be appropriate, if we could, if the board would agree to ask staff to furnish some information to us regarding the creation, what transpired and what has changed. I know they listed some changes here, but I think it'd be important, before we try to discuss this at all, that we get some information from staff, some background.
Okay, that would, that would be good, and if staff could also address the kind of more recent enforcement action that has been required there to try to keep the, keep the road clear, that sort of thing.
I would echo the mayor's comments. I'd like to see some statistics from the police department as to how many tickets have been issued for illegal parking, because there's a lot of no parking signs down there, as well as if there's been any towing from people having to even get in their own driveways and so forth. I'd like to have some police statistics as well.
Good, Commissioner Seer.
I'd like to know the actual role and agreement between the two. I mean, who's responsible, the Park Service or us?
State.
Okay. Did you hear that last part, Andy?
Yes.
Okay.
There's been a lot of changes, too. They talked about the parking signs, no parking signs. There were some, we've added some more, we've added some more. I think it'd be important to have that, certainly along with the other information that the other commissioners have developed.
Sure.
As well as, Caesar, your follow-up on your question, who's responsible for the gates?
Yeah, I think they really wanna know the clarification of roles and responsibilities between the town and the state regarding that access point.
Certainly, we'll provide all that information.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Brinkley, did you have anything else?
No, sir, thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Fuller?
On this or something new?
On this for now, and then if you have anything?
I have nothing, I disagree with everything on this.
Okay. How about on your agenda?
On my agenda, what, what I'd like to do, if possible, is like after review of the definition section in our ordinances, and with the board's approval, I'd like to ask staff to bring forward us a clearer definition of furniture store. And what I would like is something to the effect of, a furniture store is a retail store that sells furniture to the general public. The structure may have incidental storage to the principal business. I think the way the ordinance now allows the definition of furniture store, it's a little bit liberal, and I think it needs to be better defined, and I just would like for the board to allow staff to develop that and bring it to us as quickly as they could.
Board, any objection to that?
No objection.
Okay, hearing none, then staff is so directed. Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Which brings us to my agenda. A couple of items here. One, I have asked staff to have ready for us at our next meeting in November, a resolution in opposition of the, a new set of power poles on the, along 158. We know, we got a report that Dominion Power was looking at that possibility in their study. It seems a little preemptive of their study, but I also would, it feels to me as if that is our position, that we are opposed to additional polls. And I think I heard that from a couple of board members, that it would be appropriate for us to put them on notice. That may not change their, the outcome of their study, but I think that it would be appropriate for them to know that, and at least have to acknowledge it. So we would have that on the next monthly agenda. The next item, I communicated with some of you about the jetty that's under consideration at Oregon Inlet, and there's some activity underway there, including legislative changes at the state level. And with, without objection of the board, I would be in communication with our legislators to see if, in addition to that, any enabling legislation for a jetty that a groin related to a beach nourishment project, or other kind of engineered assistance to reduce the erosion at the south end of our project, might be considered as well, at least for us to just be able to study that issue.
So those are two separate things, really?
Yes, they are.
Okay. I just want to make sure that I agree with both of them.
They are. Okay, thank you.
Could you add artificial reef?
Yes, and when I said other engineered solution, that would include things like artificial reefs, or any mechanism that would help us reduce the erosion and help our project last longer.
Can I ask a question as you go forward in the jetty discussion? If they're involving at all, the council from the White House, from the President, that's who makes the final decision about permitting. That's who killed it under President George W. Bush.
Okay.
I don't know if it's the Council for Environmental Quality. I can't remember what the title was for the attorney that was there, but if they're not going to be involved, that's kind of a moot point.
Okay. Thank you. I will answer that question.
And I'm sure I didn't get the title right.
The other part that I'd like to add is that the National Park Service is looking at a sand management program that includes where Nagshead and the Park Service meet, and historically, we've had really no real discussion with them. And so any opportunity we can to take advantage of meeting with the Park Service in their management plan to adjoin our management plan, that would be great.
Thank you.
It'd be really good if the mayor would go ahead, meet with the superintendent to discuss any possible cooperation between the two entities.
Okay. I will do that. Thank you. Anything else to come from the board before we proceed to other business? Well, I'll go ahead and ask. Is there other business to come before the board, before we go to the closed session? Hearing none. Mr. Leidy, if you'll give us the correct references for the closed session?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The board needs a motion to enter closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11a3, in order to confer with the town attorney regarding matters within the attorney-client privilege and to preserve that privilege, and also pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11a6, in order to discuss one or more confidential personal matters that are protected by General Statute 160a-168.
Board members, a motion to that effect would be in order?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Board will be in closed session.
You're worried about paying for...
The board has returned to open session. Mr. Leidy, if you'll report from our closed session.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The board did confer with the town attorney regarding various matters protected by the attorney-client privilege. One action was taken, but nothing else needs to be reported at this time.
Great. Thank you very much. The last item on our agenda then is to recess the meeting to a mid-year budget review on Wednesday, October the 21st, which is our second regular meeting date. I'm going to suggest 9:00 AM instead of 5:30. Any conflicts? Let's see. Commissioner Fuller, you're looking, you have, I know you keep two different schedules to, two different...
I'm not sure right now. I mean, it's fine. I mean, I'll accommodate. I got to look at, I'll just look.
Okay.
He might interrupt his tennis.
If it interrupts any of those, I will be here.
Okay. So...
Is the 21st correct?
That's correct. So a motion to recess our meeting to Wednesday, October 21st at 9:00 AM would be in order.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. If there's no other business to come before the board, then a motion, we've already done that. Never mind. We're done.